So my daughter, you called. She's celebrating like your son. And said she signed up.
He's not the cookie man.
Right. To meet with him once a month.
The November meeting of the AMPSA Board of Orders to Order. We do have a call. It is six forty. So just to, I do want to make the note that this meeting is being videotaped. So to review the agenda quickly, we have our standard opening items. We'll have the Executive Director report. We'll have some of the Task Force updates. And then I would like to spend a fair amount of time talking about our goals for the annual meeting, our annual planning meeting in January, what we would like to achieve. I have some ideas. But I'd like to discuss that and discuss some process items so that we can make really good use of that time. So actually, that's probably the biggest discussion item that I would like to have. And then I am hoping that we can keep this meeting to two hours because we do not have executive session scheduled.
Is that I have no idea.
Look, ten minutes right there. That's the ten minutes we started late bills. Thank you. And we do not have a Finance Committee report this month because obviously we just had a very extensive one. This meeting is only three months since, three weeks since the last one. So this is a short month for us.
You want me to be a timekeeper?
Yes, that would be great. Okay, so are there any other questions or order of the agenda? Anything to add?
Paul, did you mention it's videotaped?
Yes, it's being videotaped. It is being videotaped. And also, we have Rick Kamal participating remotely due to personal disability. Rick, can you confirm that you can hear us?
Yes, I can.
And we can hear you very clearly. So, thank you.
Is there a piece two around Rick? No one else is in the vicinity where Rick is?
That's only executive session.
Oh, okay.
But what it does mean is that any votes that we take with someone in, participating remotely do have to be by roll call vote. So first up, we are looking at the minutes from the October meeting. These were circulated, unfortunately, kind of late today, but that's just how it is sometimes. So I will give people a little bit of time to look at these. And particularly because the way that Board on Track tracks votes, if you could please take a look and make sure that the, whether you've stayed or whether you voted for or against was actually captured after our late.
I'd like to move a little change. Pages aren't numbered, but the right of the Executive Director report, parent roundtable report. Last sentence, he meaning me, stated that the attendees are all by and in a uniform. I would say, he stated that attendees, that attendees he seemed to. It didn't really hold.
Seemed to.
Seemed to all by and.
Thank you. That's excellent.
I would say concern about a sole vendor and the rigidness of it as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Rigidness of the policy was also a concern when we talked to them.
Well, that was up in the, wait. I think you reported that. Oh, but it didn't show up here.
Yeah, it was definitely part of the roundtable.
Yeah, yeah, it was part of the roundtable. Yeah, part of the.
Yeah, I mean, it's been coming up to me on one off as well.
But it was in the, yeah, we actually reported it at the meeting, which was, it was reported. I remember that.
On the resolution on question two.
Yep.
It has to be recorded as I might have it voted on. However, I was not allowed to vote at the restrictions.
Correct.
So it should actually be.
That's to be escaped. Correct, yep. This is exactly the sort of thing they're like to check, make sure they've gone after. Even though there are multiple people reviewing these, those types of things, yes. Any other comments? Okay, if not, I would hand again in motion to approve these with the corrections.
So, no. Second.
All in favor will have to go in roll call votes. So Ken?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Rick?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Okay. These are approved unanimously. Public comment, Sarah, did you say we did not have a public comment for this? No, we did not. Okay. Faculty update, faculty rep update?
It came so fast it's caught off.
I know, right?
So there are five points here on this. First, I'd just like to start by saying something about that. It's been going well to come so this year. As always, the students bring a lot of joy to us as teachers, and I hope they also do for their parents.
Probably.
They have success. As a parent, as my daughter graduated last year, so.
So now you give the joy.
The different activities, there was a sports awards a few days ago, and to watch the different teams celebrate their triumphs, or at least their attempts at triumphs in different sports. The key thing that came across to me and seen it for a short time was just how much happiness they had in being able to follow a sport in that form of exit here at Amsa. And the mass teams is having horrendously good success, and a very young team, developing team, is doing superbly. Both at the freshman level and the full varsity level. Latin at the curtaumin, the varieties are quite strong. I don't know if chess is running this year, I think it is, but certainly the computer science and business and some just trying reform. Just the joy kids take in doing these things is a pleasure to see, and that will always hopefully be there for Amsa. In terms of faculty directed concerns, that we somehow, I would just mention to remind people that these are part of the scenes of the year to think about, and that won't necessarily say very much, and that we few are going too much. We understand that the mentoring program is now initiating. Teachers have told me that today and yesterday, you give a notification of who their peer mentors would be and things like that. And so we look forward with hope, and we wish that it be successful upon all this. Of course, as I said last time, the fact that there's a certain worry or a certain concern as to the aspect of confidentiality between peer mentors and teachers, and that this be done in the spirit of support and building, and not as another, another form of evaluation outside of the evaluative process, which is more than just building and supporting. But we don't know yet, and we wish it the very best. Scheduling, scheduling is a huge issue, has been an issue all year long, it used to be an issue. And we are working with it, one wishes we could cure some things. At the very least, we have to have faith in this point of his face, that next year, everything that's been learned through this year will accumulate and will bring wisdom, and will bring an approach, a plan, a thinking through that will make things right. The problem of attrition, it's always there with faculty. The constant sense that things are dissolving among the faculty has not gone away. I'm going to not push that at this particular meeting. I'll save that for, as the year unfolds, there'll be moments I am sure we'll have to address more, more fully, with more respect to the detailed roles on July's. For now, we are not forgetting that it's there. What's the last, the only thing that's truly new is we now are seeing the coming to be, coming to fruition of the first stage of the evaluation process for teachers. It was a process that, in terms of its idea and its basic structure, was worked through negotiation with the Board of Trustees and the faculty union last year. Both sides wanted it. Both sides fought to find a form that everyone could believe in and see as something that would act awesome, would help teachers grow, develop, help them to become the school that it should be. Is it, is it going to be successful? We don't know. It's an experiment. The faculty have had observations both by department heads and by members of administration. There are causes for concern. As a faculty rep, I for some reason seem to get all strategic, will come to me for advice or concern, discussions of their concerns. It is illuminating. There is information that I am taking to heart. Right now, just raise it this way, as it unfolds, we really do wish this to be a successful technique that makes Amsa into a better school. We want all sides to work for that. But the faculty will be acutely attentive for any sense of being used for ulterior purposes, for anything other than what was intended to be. And it means for teacher, and students, and Amsa community to become even better than this. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
So Tom, I'm saying skeptistically, ten shots.
Excellent.
Wow.
That's what you call a step forward.
Does anyone have any questions for Tom? Thank you. Liz has requested that she defer her report until after the ED report, so we will turn this over to Dr. McCleary to give his monthly update.
Thank you. So the first thing on my list here is an update on the mentoring program, which was discussed at the last board meeting. As Tom mentioned, the mentoring program has been initiated, and I think it's working successfully between the department chairs, the mentor teachers, and the teachers being mentored. The goals are to create academic community, build teaching capacity, affirm Amsa's values, communicate significant Amsa events, traditions, policies, and procedures, and explain processes in the Amsa classroom, such as the learning objective, homework, essential questions, how to use plus portals, and so on. So it's really got a number of goals, and I think that the work that's gone on so far between the chairs and the mentor teachers and the mentees has been very encouraging. So they have their meeting schedules set up now, and they're actually, as Tom mentioned, they're starting off with the formal part of the program. Although they have been mentoring new teachers since the beginning of the year through the department chairs. I want to thank Ms. O'Connor, the principal, for all of her work in that area, and also the department chairs and the mentor teachers. Special education, just an update on how things are going in that area. We had a discussion of special education toward the end of the last school year, and this is some information about how things are going so far. There have been several CPAC meetings, which have been attended by both of the co-coordinators for the special education department. Been a number of new people come on board. We have a new speech and language pathologist who replaced the one that retired at the end of last year. This one has special experience with social pragmatics, which was something that was actually requested through the CPAC last year. We've hired a behavior specialist as a consultant to support the students' social emotional needs. There's been 100% compliance with special education timelines so far this year. I know there were a few times last year, especially in the transition where there had to be improvement in that area. We've had a number of special education presentations to the general staff of the school at professional development days, and that's been helpful so that the general classroom teachers can have a more in-depth understanding of what goes on in special education and be able to function more collaboratively with the special education teachers and the powers. We've also helped to promote the CPAC meetings and workshops by forwarding information by email to special ed families, and also having this guidance department chair with the 504 student families. The special ed co-coordinators, coordinators have attended the CPAC workshops and meetings. We've, the school has renewed the Mass PAC membership. The school pays for that and included a basic rights workshop for parents. Also, the school created a welcome letter from the special education department that was sent out with a brochure that was created especially in regard to the CPAC organization. PAC and CPAC are synonymous, it's the same thing. We also have been working on offering an executive functioning workshop for parents at a future CPAC meeting. That's also something that was requested. And we've held executive functioning training for the special education staff in early November. So those are some of the good things, I think, that are happening in the special education department in terms of improvements and collaborations on what we've done in the past. On the communication side of things, I know this has been an area of focus and an attempt to improve. We've hired a new, a new employee, Mike Finkel is our new communications manager, and he'll be, he'll be taking care of newsletter, a website, social media, and of course, general interaction between the school and outside entities. And we're very happy he's with us. He has an extensive background, experience in journalism and photography, and he's worked in a number of different capacities as communications officer, and marketing, and so forth, so on. He's here tonight, and I thought he'd just say a little bit about himself and introduce himself.
Mike, one of you said Mike. It's Sarah. Maybe not, I don't know.
First test of the game. I think it's great to be here at Amsa. As Dr. McCleary said, I have background in communications that goes back quite a few years and want to have like to that. Starting out as a journalist in the 1980s in Western Mass, and then continuing into the marketing world, advertising, some agency work, industries such as timber industry, medical, food industry, aerospace, and most recently software for Revlon. And recently, as I had sort of surveyed and landscape for a lot of charities, and saw this one, it was really exciting and intriguing. It's kind of, kind of brings together everything I've done over the years into one position. Tassed with a challenging role, but an exciting one, to improve internal communications, external, and increase the robust content that we put out to our various audiences. And in general, kind of build a communications program that's reflective of the school, celebrating knowledge, excellence, and hopefully innovative and impactful for our families and for our faculty. I'm looking forward to working with everybody here, particularly the faculty, highlighting what they're doing and what the students are doing, and just getting our reputation out there. Happy to be here. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
So other things in the area of communications, we're continuing to have the ED parent coffees each month on Tuesdays early in the month. At the last event, we talked about academic honesty and character development. That was a topic suggested at the first ED coffee of the year, so we've sort of adopted the practice of asking at the end of each coffee what people would like to talk about the next time. There wasn't any theme that was offered up at the, at the end of the last one, so we're working on that for the December one. We also got some feedback, both through, well, more through the parent rep to the board, but also occasionally from different parents who would send emails that it might be helpful to have one of the coffees every now and then in the evening. So next, next time in early December, we're having it from six to seven in the evening to allow people who might not be able to come to the morning ones to come. We've had very healthy numbers, 32, 33 people coming to each one, and the discussion has been very helpful, I think, because it gives the school, represented by myself, an opportunity to put out some ideas and then have the parents not only have a give and take with the ED, but also talk to each other and learn from each other. They come from different grade levels and different backgrounds, and they are able to share that information with each other. We also are planning to have an ED advisory group, which would have members on it from all the different areas of the school's constituencies, and we're working on a way to put that together, and we hope to have that up and running by December. The idea would be to have a group that would provide a sort of a think tank, if you will, or sort of a idea group for the ED to meet once a month, and we can talk about, the ED can present different problems that we may be working on, or solutions we're trying to come up with, and then the advisory group can go and work on those things and then come back with some solutions. And it could be a way to have input from different parts of the school community and be able to deal with certain pressing issues that come up in the course of the school's life. This is something that people have been asking for, more opportunities for two-way communication and input. I've also started having regular meetings with individual teachers. When I first arrived at the school in, roughly in May 2015, I started meeting with teachers individually and was going along at a pretty good pace, and then, once I took over fully the duties of Executive Director, that tended to taper off a little bit because of time constraints, but I started that up again. And it was one of the suggestions that the faculty rep had brought to my attention at our last meeting. We meet once a month and discuss things. And one of the things we were discussing is ways to have teachers feel more heard and to be able to improve their sense of belonging and morale in the school. And so we've already started those meetings. I've had about four or five of them, and we're going to continue them into the coming weeks, and just work through systematically, meeting with people. Mostly, I listen, I hear from them about their background and their experiences at the school, and then areas where they think the school could get even better than it already is.
How long are these meetings?
Half an hour. Although some go a little longer. Depends on how much the teachers have to say. But at any rate, they've been very constructive, I think. The last item on my list here is a proposal to move from the school's current database software, which is called Reddiger's. It's put out by a small company out of Western Massachusetts, to a larger product, a company put out by a larger, a product put out by a larger company called Power School. And so I've put together a summary here of what I see as the relative merits of the new software in terms of the old one.
This is an unbudgeted item for this year, so Tom Taverna, who could not be here today, this was brought up on the last Finance Committee, and he asked for this for Dr. McCleary to present it to everybody so that we know what it is and what the financial impact is. It doesn't necessarily require board approval, I would say, because it's not, it's, it won't have a significant budget impact in this year, but over the course of multiple years, I mean, there is a financial impact, so we want everyone to be aware of it.
I can give you just a little bit of background on why we think this would be a good idea. We have a new IT director this year, Mr. Bisson, and he comes from work in a very, in a number of different districts, public school districts that are quite a bit larger than ours, West Springfield, for example. And at those, when he was working in those districts, he found that the Power School software data management system was very efficient, and I think most significantly, it's very much user-friendly in terms of the way that not only the faculty can use it, but also the parents, as well as the administrators. And so, just to sort of briefly touch on some of the points that I think are important, the way that the data can be accessed is through any device in the Power School system as opposed to a desktop in the Reddiger system. One of the things that attracted our attention, especially this year, was the way that the schedule building function works in Power School as opposed to Reddiger. We had some firsthand experience with some of the drawbacks of the Reddiger system this year. It's been described by the IT director as a bit cumbersome or clunky in the way that it works. And in Power School, it does have a schedule building feature, but it, it has more flexibility. It allows you to try out different scenarios with a certain flexibility that Reddiger didn't provide. And again, I haven't had as much direct experience with it as our IT director, but he was in charge of building the schedules in these large districts, which encompassed a number of schools, both elementary and high school. And so his, his input's been really helpful in this area since he's had direct experience and responsibility for building schedules. He made a presentation to various members of the administration, including all the department chairs, and they got an opportunity to see how the system would work, and all of them were actually very much impressed with it and thought it would be a good move for us. Also, our vice principals had experience using Power School at another charter school, and she said she also thought it was, would be a big improvement. Another area where I think it will help us.
Dr. McCleary. Yeah? In reference to the scheduling aspect, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
I've heard very good things about Power School. I am absolutely ignorant of what these things are like, I'm just basing my hearsay. So it sounds like many good reasons for moving to Power School. But in discussing the schedule, it should be kept in mind that a platform, a machine, is, couldn't go so far helping you out in terms of devising a schedule that is coherent, is feasible. It's a mathematical problem, the creation of a schedule, and it's independent of the particular machine that asks you to, to show you the details. You can't program something to undo the mathematical constraints. You can't program something to undo the mathematical constraints. So, we would hope, as faculty, that this Power School and its useful scheduling isn't seen as some sort of panacea that can, by some magic app, undo the need for thinking through how conditions imposed on the schedule can lead to issues that can't be easily resolved.
The constraints clearly, to me, seem like that's a big piece of it, but the fact that you can build scenarios means you can do it ahead of time.
So, I'm not saying the reason why the item in Power School, I've said the opposite here, it's great.
No, I agree.
But, it'd be done in, from the frame of mind that the scheduling issues will not be solved by simply doing a new app. The scheduling issues will maybe be made more amenable through this app, so it makes it clearer what we have to do to make a schedule work. I would hope that the handle of this is not a kind of, you know, hope or self-delusion that in changing a technology, we are solving a problem.
Yeah, I would agree with you. Yeah, I would, I like to think that I'm not deluding myself. I would never see it as a panacea.
So, I guess one of the natural questions on this, so I heard you say that the department chairs had seen it, various members of administration, the vice principal has used it in the past. Have members of, the guidance department looked at it or used it, or had they, were they briefed on it?
Yeah.
Were the, any members of the faculty involved in, you know, sort of reviewing, you know, some of these functions that if they're going to be used by teachers, administrators, parents, and so forth?
Yeah, it's primarily, it's primarily an administrative tool, but the guidance counselors have had a look at it.
And the faculty?
Yeah, I don't, I think, yeah, department chairs have, yeah. I'm sorry.
Yes, Richard, I didn't allow.
The IT director had gave me the sandbox to ask me to test it out. I did, I did test it out.
Okay, so, what did you check?
Yeah, I think it's a tool, and it's something that we want to optimize as much as we can. Obviously, any tool is as good as or as bad as the people that are using it and what information they use.
Does this mean this is a change for parents, they're not going to be using Plus Portals?
Yes. Yeah, it would be a different look for parents. It would have the same types of functions. In other words, you can access your child's grades, and you can find information. One of the reasons that we think it will be an improvement is because it's a much more user-friendly interface than the one that is presented by Reddiker in the present form. It's, it's got, even the screen, the way that you look at it, it's more intuitive the way you use it. You don't have to, you know, figure it out. I mean, if you've used Plus Portals, it's a very, it's a kind of a clumsy. I think one of the things that also led us to think that it was a good move is that it's being used by many, many districts in the state, and there's been a lot of experience, and it seems to be very successful in the way it's being used and the way it's being received. So, that was also part of our thinking. I guess the last thing I want to mention is that it's, it's a very well-integrated system, so that the way that you can transfer information across different departments in the school is made much more fluid and easy, and that's something that will save us time. It takes a lot of time when people have to download things and move them around in sort of inconvenient ways. In this way, while you can restrict access to the appropriate people, of course, you can actually have the information update in real time as opposed to having to do what we currently do, which is shut things down and sort of do these, I forget the name they have for sync.
Synchronization.
Yeah, synchronization. So, that, we think that would be an advantage as well. So, the change in terms of, well, one of the things we thought about a lot was how do we do this so that we don't disrupt the flow of things? So, obviously, when you change over anything like this, you have to transfer a lot of data. So, the way that we've sort of thought out how to do it is, we purchased Power School early in the year, let's say now, and we start to set it up, but we set it up parallel to Reddiker. So, Reddiker keeps working, Power School works parallel, and we start to use Power School to build the schedule, which is something we usually start in the mid-winter. And then, we gradually move, start to move things over without interrupting our current database, and then, when the school year ends, we can make the full switch over in the summer, and we can have training scheduled for the faculty before the school year ends so that they can become aware of how to use it going into next year, so they don't arrive at the, you know, beginning of the school year and not familiar with how to use it. So, that's the general plan. We have, the IT director's built out a timeline that we can, if we follow that, we'll be able to have a transition that would basically unfold over the course of eight to ten months. The goal being, of course, to make it as seamless as possible, and the bulk of any real shutdowns would occur during the summer as opposed to during the school year.
Dr. McCleary, is there any type of a maintenance contract or tax support agreement?
Yeah, that's, no, that's, sorry, that's a license fee.
Yeah, the license and subscription fee and the professional services and setup fees are on the next page there, and that includes all of that support that you need. There's also a fee for training so that they can have people come out and help us to get everybody up to speed on how to use it. One of the advantages, I think, is that we have an IT director who's used it for years and who has been in charge of scheduling, so I think that's going to help us. As I mentioned, our vice principal's also familiar with it, she's used it in the past as well.
Okay, great.
So, the annual license fee, twenty-three thousand, would continue...
Yes.
Extended.
Yeah.
But, the capitalized expenditures that you listed there are what, end after that fourth year?
Yeah, we're depreciating it over a period of three years, actually. There's half depreciated the first year and half in the last, and then, sorry, it's three years. It's seven thousand, then fourteen, fourteen, so, three times fourteen, six.
But, but, in terms of the longer term, Reddiker versus Power School, in the longer term, I'm not talking about these first four years where you've got to capitalize expenditures, but in the longer term, the license for Reddiker is sixteen thousand versus the license for Power School is twenty-three thousand.
That's right.
So, not a significant difference in the longer term. It's only a more significant difference in these first few years.
Yeah, the cash impact is really the first year.
The cash, that's right. So, I think in terms of the benefits, the long-term benefits, it would be worthwhile to do it. I mean, it's always a significant thing when you change over the, you know, the whole software structure you're using, but I think it's a worthwhile thing to do for the school.
Does anyone have any questions on this?
I think running parallel is a great idea. Any software conversion is just a bunch of misery anyway, so, backup there just.
Yeah, we've already paid for Reddiker through next September, so, we're basically just going to... That was the advice of the, when we talked about it, the IT director said that was the best way to do it, so, that's right.
Sounds good.
I assume it's fully depreciated already, Reddiker?
Yes, Reddiker is depreciated. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. McCleary. Let's move on, let's go back then to Liz's report.
Okay, thanks, thanks for helping me out there. So, the reason why I wanted to defer, because a lot of my comments are around communication, so I wanted to wait and let Mike be introduced before we scare him off. More so, I want to welcome you aboard. Before we go into the communication, though, I did just want to piggyback on something Tom said, because I was in attendance last Thursday night at the athletic banquet as well, and in addition, I think, to all of the excitement around some very significant wins this fall, I just wanted to point out, for those of you who were not in attendance, the number of academic awards that were also given out along with the athletics, I think, and I look over there at Jessica Bone, because her daughter was one of the recipients, but I did just want to point out, there were a number of academic awards along with the academic, along with the academic awards along with the athletic awards, and I thought that was very nice to see, so I did just want to point that out as well. In terms of the communication, I think that we've, for a while now, have been challenged with communication, so, Mike, we're very, very happy to have you aboard. A couple of the things that we would, from a parent perspective, that we've been challenged with and that we'd like to see is, we have Stan who videotapes the meetings, and if there's any way that we can get those either livestreamed, which would be really significant, a significant help, or at least, you know, up on a website within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. One of the things that a lot of the parents are challenged with is, they can't see the minutes for over a month because they have to be approved. So, for the parents to understand what takes place at the meetings, a lot of times, it's more through, you know, word of mouth, and we know how that goes. So, I think if we have more up-to-date information, that would be great. I'd also like to thank Stan, because this is something that he's been doing for a number of years.
Entirely voluntarily, yeah.
Voluntarily, you know, it's not part of his job, the local news station does provide him with the equipment, but this is something that he has done completely voluntary, so I would like to thank him for that. I think in addition, the keeping up with newsletters and any type of communication the parents are desperately in need of. One other thing, they're very excited about having the evening session. One thing to consider, if you're looking for a topic, I do know that it would be great if we could extend it out to additional members of the administrative staff, to include them in the evening session in December, so that, you know, they would have more of an opportunity, because I can tell you, and I think Ms. O'Connor and Ms. Lindsay would agree, that whenever they are around the parents at PTO meetings, they love to talk to them. So, I think if we could extend that out, that would be wonderful if they're able to attend. I know December is a busy month, but if, at all, that would be wonderful as well. And I think that's it right now for the parents. I guess the other, the good news is, it's been sort of a quiet month, so...
It's only three weeks.
Yes. Wow, yes, that one week really kills us. But, anyway, I think that that's sort of ended on a positive note. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's move on to chair business. We have two outstanding complaints. Rick and Liz were assigned to a bullying complaint. Rick, are you in a position to report on that, please?
Yes, I am. So, with respect to the complaint, Liz and I have had the opportunity to several interviews and review various business documentation. We're potentially complete with our review, our investigation, and at this point, we need to formally write off the review, and I think also review it with one of the committees, I believe, governance committee, just so that if, as they, as the folks investigating, we're not a formal committee, and so, if there are recommendations, we really can't be recommended. We're more of a fact-finding team.
That's true.
Where I do believe, based on those facts found, I think we did make sense to review with some, or with a committee, so that we could list a set of our recommendations that have come out of what we found. And so, that's kind of an exception, actually writing out a review, reviewing it, I believe, with governance, governance committee, and then having a set of recommendations go along with the findings.
So, you're actually set to talk about it at the December governance committee? That's what it is?
Yes, that would be our intent, yes.
Okay.
I do need to follow up with Ed, as well as, yes.
Well, he's taking notes.
Yeah, we can, we can put it on the agenda for next month, Rick.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
That's a very, that's actually a very nice way of handling it, given that, the way that our task forces are set up, we can't make recommendations, yeah.
Yeah.
And Ev and I are assigned to a civil rights complaint.
Yep.
Which we actually have to work on.
As Pauline just mentioned, we have a civil rights complaint that we are continuing to follow. I think we're getting close on that one. We met with another party, or a conference call with another party just the other day, and so, I think we have pretty much gone through all, we might have one level, but it's a good chance we might be in a position by next month to come to closing, I think, on this one.
Actually, governance is probably a good idea, too, yeah.
Yeah.
Because we can talk about recommendations, are?
Yep, so, we're pretty close on this one.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Great idea. I'm going to skip Allison, because she is not here, to do the special education, I have to take regional issues task force.
Yeah, so, Dr. McCleary and I met on November third, on Thursday. I met with him in the morning, and we had a discussion on where the regional issues task force and some of the issues that the task force had identified were. To summarize our conversation, I thought it was a very useful, productive conversation. I guess to summarize it, I would say that the solution for these are probably longer term. An example of this is, task force had asked for some, some data which is not readily available, although Dr. McCleary is working to, to make this available, so that in the longer term, the, the board will be able to monitor these things through data, and the administration, for that matter, will be able to monitor these issues. And so, we're going to, we'll probably be working longer term on those. Some of the issues, other issues that we discussed, he felt that the school was ready to take on. For example, improvements to the orientation in order to, to better meet the needs of the non-Marlborough...
Is or is not?
I'm sorry?
Is or is not, I just couldn't hear, is ready to take on?
Yeah, yeah, the administration is ready to take on several of the issues, and to use as an example, you know, the idea of improving the orientation to better meet the needs of non-Marlborough kids that are coming in in the sixth grade and seventh grade and so forth. He felt as though the school was ready to take those on. So, I took it as an action on my part to sort of summarize these issues, and then I'm going to review this both with Dr. McCleary and with the regional issues task force. I think, again, in the longer term, I think a good solution is probably not going to be, some of these things are going to get resolved right away, other things will probably be a little bit more stubborn. A good example, one that's going to probably take longer to do is around the regional bus service and sort of a longer-term solution for that. So, I think it's, you know, it's good news. We've identified some of the issues. Some will get taken on by the school right away. Some of the things around data gathering and so forth will be, take a little bit longer, and some of the issues, we're going to do. So, again, I'm going to summarize it, coordinate that with Dr. McCleary, coordinate that with the task force, and I hope to report out and recommend some, some specific actions in time, as we had sort of said, with the annual, the end of the year, the annual planning and so forth.
Yeah, at least what you can, but it sounds like you would go longer. Right. Because it's not a task force that's going to get disbanded in December.
Correct. So, well, so, just let me clarify, I guess. I think part of this is to decide which issues we can, we can sort of rest with the administration, and some of that, you know, might be too, to...
Like, right.
Right. And I just want to, I feel an obligation to report out to the regional issues task force, as well as to the board as a whole, to get a larger agreement on how to handle this going forward.
Okay. Good. Rick, I added in climate task force, but actually, there was nothing specific. I think that was, I just left it in from last month, unless you have anything to add? You reported out on the...
No, I do not. I had nothing.
Yeah, you reported on the roundtable last time. Okay. So, the annual planning meeting is coming up in two months. It's the last Saturday in January. We do go for half a day, it's eight AM until one PM. And in the past couple of years, well, four years I've been aboard, we have done, generally done two things. One is, we'll do a board self-assessment. Sometimes we do it at the meeting and report out the results, or sometimes we do it and , you know, report the results later. So, that's one thing I want to talk about. The other thing is, we always have to do our annual goals, our, as a board, what are we going to do goals? These are not really intended, this meeting isn't really intended to do that, right? The meeting is actually supposed to be a retreat, where we take a step back from sort of our monthly business and talk about much longer-term issues. And last year, we tried to do that, right? Last year, we took a baby step towards bringing outside people in and trying to talk about some of these longer things. I think that was challenging, just given that it was Dr. McCleary's, you know, had been at the ED for three months at that point, and the school year had only just started, and that we still had a lot of day-to-day issues that we were working through. I'm optimistic that maybe this year, we can actually take a stab at going much longer term. Rick and I have had a discussion about this... Um, Rick and I have had a discussion about this and, Rick, I don't remember the name of the thing that you told me. I wrote it down and now I can't remember the weird Japanese term. Um, but I think that one of the things that we thought would be very useful, and I wanted to just throw this out there, was to talk about where we want to be, really, really define where we wanna be five years from now, or three years from now, I don't know what that is, right? What do we want the school to look like in sort of a three to five year timeframe? And then we can back up from there. So, and, uh, I, I think as part of that is we define what we really are, you know, what is the vision for that piece of it? Um, and then the other thing that I would like to, to cover in that meeting is to talk about what are the real core values that we think are important in order to achieve those. Um, so I would like to hear people's reaction to that, do you think that is possible to do in this period of time?
Also, I, I think it's, those sound like good topics. I mean, we have to be organized, right? We'll be all over the place unless we really figure out designing that session, maybe a little pre-work.
Uh, there will definitely be pre-work, that's why we're talking about it now, because we're going to, you're gonna have pre-work and homework for December and January.
And then we, we had talked about whether or not we're gonna have a philosophical discussion about our operating reserves.
Yes, that would be part of this, right? I think that is a, that is definitely in there. I, I think the question I have is maybe if we, if we do that, then I don't know that we can do the board self-assessment in this timeframe, right?
I think it sounds good, but I also, we need to be realistic about what you can accomplish in four hours.
Right, right.
And keeping in mind our good but mostly failed intentions to become, you know, in order of magnitude more strategic in these meetings. I think if we did, as part of coming out from that was a resolution that an hour or twenty minutes or with some agreed upon amount of time at the beginning of each board meeting through the coming year would be devoted to strategic topics. Uh, this is as a way to, you know, because we're not gonna get where we need to get in one discussion.
Right.
And it'll also help us establish the habit of do the strategic stuff first.
So, uh, I'd like to add something on to that. You know, in terms of trying to focus the discussion, the board has responsibilities relative to academic program success, faithfulness to the charter, organizational viability. It seems like we would wanna sit there and limit our discussion or focus our discussion, not necessarily limit it, but focus our discussion in those areas. Uh, in, in terms of what does it mean over the next three to five years to continue to be faithful to our charter? What is it, what does academic program success mean in the next three to five years? What is, uh, what does organizational viability mean for us? Okay? Those are the areas where we have, uh, you know, a larger discussion about what we want the school to look like actually gets into things that are more, uh, properly per view of the administration, might tap into what parents wanna see, um, and not that that's not a useful discussion, but, you know, and probably a discussion that needs to take place at some point, but if we're gonna focus our efforts as a board, it needs to be along what the board's responsibilities are.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
This is for myself and I'm going to claim the comments representing the faculty thoughts. We sort of have discussed amongst ourselves, what does this school aim to be, hope to be in the future? Um, but these are just my own thoughts, is that I would like to see that conversation take place because if anything that we feel has not happened in the last few years is a sense of why are we doing all this? What are we aiming at? So much has been about looking back and trying to amend for past mistakes, correct current flaws, and the details of that consume time, consume the spirit. And then we forget, ask ourselves, well, before all that happened, what were we aiming for? What were we building? Where would we be going? And can we not resurrect that spirit of moving forward with genuine purpose?
You know, and I think expertise exists to facilitate those kinds of institutional conversations as well.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that's a great point, Tom, and I think it, um, does need to be done. And it's a process that is somewhat analogous to strategic planning, is somewhat analogous to, you know, a self-study for accreditation process. But there are people who know how to do it with large numbers of people so that everyone gets heard from in a worthy way, actions can be taken to follow up, and consensus is maximized.
Yeah, top to Verna Florida would be this thing. Apparently the truth rate public schools are going through this right now and they're having these gigantic, like, multiple day, um, you know, all day meetings with members of the community and all sorts of things. So there clearly someone that's helping them do that sort of thing. We're, we're talking about baby step right now, but I mean, what, actually a facilitator is one question that I had for you, if you guys thought that might be something that is useful. Board on Track actually can do this. It's not really part of our membership, so it would be an extra cost, but they could do it at a, you know, extremely discounted rate for us because we are here and because they actually have a long history with the school. Um, the founder of Board on Track, Marcy Cornell Fies, actually helped Julia Segalovski start the school. So, you know, she's very familiar with sort of what the original concept actually was. Um, that's a possibility if you think that would be useful.
I don't know who, who it is, but we should definitely have a facilitator.
Okay, that's what.
If you're trying, it's gonna be some.
Absolutely. I mean, we, we just, we won't get it done. We won't, we won't.
I agree.
So, um, I think we should have a facilitator. I mean, Ken and I know people.
Yeah, I know, you guys definitely know people. Here's our.
It's not, it's not a huge amount of money.
It really isn't a huge amount of money, right? Okay, so I'm hearing the facilitator.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, so we all, we can all come up with a name.
And then Marcy was president of the creation.
She was president. I mean, I think she's still on the day.
There's value in that.
But there's value in that. Um, the only question that we had, and, and now I'm speaking for Rick because he's not here, he can speak for himself, but I, and this is a very good point. If we bring in someone from a charter school governance organization, would they have a bias towards sort of their way of doing things? Would we rather have just like a pure?
Yeah, I'd bring in a, I'd bring in a person who just does this all the time around strategy. Again, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think they're talking about a lot of money for a half a day for someone.
Right.
I think it's mostly just keeping on track and making sure people are heard and, you know.
Yeah, they could drive the process, they could drive the process.
Yep.
It's a structured way to kind of get us from A to Z, right?
Well, so, so I'll, I'll be the dissenting voice, I guess.
No!
I know, I know that comes as a surprise. So the idea of having, I think the, the idea of having someone who has wider experience across charter schools might be helpful in terms of bringing in what other schools have been struggling with, what other schools have been done, certainly more familiar with sort of the framework, particularly within Massachusetts around, you know, focusing that. So, you know, I, I guess.
I tend to, yeah, I tend to agree with Ken. I think that having somebody who's familiar with the charter school structure and how charter schools are mission-focused institutions is probably a good idea. I think particularly, I mean, I know facilitators have general skills, but I think sometimes the transfer between, uh, a corporate mindset and a school or educational mindset is not as easy to achieve.
I, I don't feel strongly, but if, if that's, that's what people think, is right, it makes sense to me. I just, but I think we need a facilitator.
I'm telling you, I'm a facilitator.
I think that sounds fine, I mean.
I mean, we know, we can check with Board on Track, um, and Dr. McCleary has, has provided me another governance, charter school governance expert, um, if Board on Track can't do it for whatever reason. I mean, because we really can't, you know, change the date of our meeting, we've all put it in our calendars and that, so it's gotta be on that day.
I, I would also say that this is not a half-day, uh.
Right.
Engagement. I mean, if we're gonna do pre-work, this, then, then this facilitator needs to be involved with the.
The pre-work, it's designing the pre-work.
And we probably, uh, if, if we're going to continue this discussion afterwards.
We would need the.
Uh, that could, that could be something that would go longer after that, so.
So it's part of that pre-work and it might be good if we sort of design, what are we, what's a successful outcome of that session? What are the deliverables going to be so that when we walk out of there, we can sort of say, yes, we made this one, we made that one, or we, oh, sure, anything, that's gonna help the facilitator make sure we meet, uh, what we say we're gonna do. I mean, somewhere in, uh, just reflecting back here around the strategy piece, I've been four to five years out, there's a piece for me with regards to something that Rick brought up some time ago, sort of our college readiness and for the students and being able to somehow get a sense of, once our students leave here, they go through college, do they become successful? And it's not an easy one, but somewhere within that strategy piece of what would we like the school to look like four to five years from now? I think to me that's a piece of it that would be good to have some brief discussion.
And that's actually where I think having an educational person, a facilitator would have that perspective more than a corporate person.
Sounds good.
I think that more.
So, Ev, are you suggesting the task force perform to plan the thing, plan the meeting? Talking about having deliverables. We're not gonna meet again until.
Yeah, we're not meeting again till December, like, and the December meeting is right at the end.
Yeah, um, I don't know if this is much of a task force, but a certain part of the homework and maybe as part of the homework, we have folks list out what they think the deliverables should be and then maybe, maybe those get coalesced in and we do a, you know, looks at the top three that are most prevalent that people wanna see or something like that. So, task force would be one way, but there's another way to do it also, which is just make sure it goes out as part of the pre-work or homework.
Which is negotiating with, I would assume, a facilitator to handle that. So.
Yeah, I don't think we need a task force to do that, but I think there are people who could do, take on parts of this, right? I mean, certainly I feel like Rick and I have to, to drive this with a facilitator, right? I mean, that's our.
I would feel comfortable with your reply.
It would be. Well, I don't know, I just heard Ev come up with these crazy ideas.
I concur with Chris.
I mean, I, I, I have, have, have struggled with the idea that, right? That's why I really wanted to generate this discussion on how we can make it most useful and, and try to focus it down and see what we can sort of bite off in that four-hour chunk, right? So what I'm hearing is that we should go ahead and do that, we'll try to get charter school, um, facilitator to help us with this, then it'll be, you know, definitely a big homework, I was forgetting that. Um, not to do the board self-assessment at this point in time? Should we do that at some other later point?
Yeah, it'll be time constrained.
Yeah, 'cause we'll be time constrained. Um, how strongly do you feel that we need to get our annual goals done in that meeting?
Again, if we're setting aside time for strategic thinking in all of our board meetings, then, you know, I think we could begin to work in January and then do it in February.
I, I think we at least need to talk about annual goals, even if we don't settle on them and so forth, at least get the discussion started.
At least priority.
Because, because having that, that step back time, I think, is important and we don't always have that, so at least to get the conversation started.
But it's not, it's not, I'm gonna say, but, you could connect it to the five-year plan. You could say, here's a, here's our multi-year plan and as a result of that, are we starting to get, going back up and say where we need to start?
Yeah.
Start to build a roadmap?
Yeah.
Probably, even if we leave with a roadmap that doesn't have the language yet, we have generally speaking, like, where we wanna be up to year one, two, three, and four.
You really think we can get to that?
Well, I think you can build a road, I think, asking the facilitator to get us to a roadmap at the end, not just to kind of declare where we wanna be, but to kind of say, okay, so what are the pieces to get there? I don't know.
I think it's actually hard to get to.
No, I, I agree with Mike. I mean, you know, the, uh, even if we don't complete, look, we're not gonna complete, let's say, no, that's bad, okay? But at least to move from a discussion of what do we wanna do over the next three years to let's lay out a roadmap or priorities and stuff like that, even if we don't finish, at least to, to, to engage the framework and sort of see that framework.
It doesn't, for sure, it performs the faults, right?
I concur from the senator, with the senator.
They agree with the senator, so I agree.
Final question, what timeframe do you think is realistic that we should really be thinking about? Is it three years or is it five years?
Uh, three.
Three? Okay.
Yeah, I think three, just because of.
I agree.
The terms, yeah. Terms, you have to keep it to three if it's, if we have.
I say we go for fifteen.
Where do we wanna be fifteen years from now?
No, three.
Okay.
Could I ask a question about what, um, what last year's, uh, goals were and did we accomplish them?
So last year's goals, um, are on what site? We published those, uh, we have them, we, I think we reviewed them last month, I think. We were not great this past year. Uh, we're not doing terribly well in 2016, uh, because we set out a lot of goals.
So, do you think there were too many?
There might have been too many.
We always aspire to greatness.
Of course, as we should.
I mean, the year before we had too many and we didn't meet most of those two, so, so I should say we haven't met most of our goals, but we are, we did in the right direction. Right, that is what we've done. Um, it, it sort of, I think we've identified areas of focus and we've like tried to make progress in those areas. Um, I would say this past year, we still had a lot going on with litigation and collective bargaining and those things just have to be done, right? Obviously, so that's harder to make, it was just limited bandwidth. But we don't have, but we do have litigation still, but we're not, we, because we have two-year contracts with teachers this year, we are not doing collective bargaining this year. It would start in the next fall, so there is more time to do a little bit, to do, you know, work. Great, that's very exciting. Just think, a three-year plan. A three-year roadmap would be, uh, three-year roadmap would be, um, nice to be able to look forward. Great. And I will keep you updated, Rich and Mark. Okay, um, move on to governance.
Uh, let's see, um, in your package you have a sheet that's titled, um, ED Bonus Goals 2016, 2017. And you may remember we had quite a lengthy discussion on this at the, uh, last month's BOT meeting and we actually voted and approved the bonus goals with the, um, uh, with the additional follow-up action to go back and, in essence, put meat on the bones for number four. So we had number four, which was really around expanding our corporate and, um, university, um, engagement, but we didn't have defined metrics on it and so we left that meeting sort of saying, uh, we'd like to engage Dr. Clary, um, find out what we're currently doing now and what would make sense as far as, um, adding in some additional meat to the bone on this one.
I forgot to include that document. We had it at governance, I'll circulate the document, the document's inside for governance.
Oh, yes, yes. Um, there was a, uh, document that, uh, Pauline brought in, which was given to her by Dr. Clary, which listed the current engagement areas that we have on corporate and university. And it was a pretty good list of, um.
There it is. I will circulate that.
So governance, we, we had a lengthy discussion on this, matter of fact, this was pretty much our whole meeting because this was not an easy subject to sort of try to, um, make tangible. And so what you see here is really a, um, sort of a straw proposal of what the metrics and what the actual intent of this would be. And so it starts off with saying, really, we wanted to find what the value proposition is. It's definitely for AMPs, that's also possibly for, uh, GE. So one of the things I should say is that because, and if you think about the presentation that we saw at last month's meeting, which was by a parent who was, you know, moved in across the street with, uh, GE Healthcare and they were, uh, she presented the opportunity to engage with AMPs as part of this, uh, corporate outreach, we wanna try to really take advantage of that and that's one that we can really sort of sink our teeth into. So this particular goal that we have here is really focused very much, uh, on the GE Healthcare. So as it says, define the value proposition, so what's the true benefit of why we wanna do this and what we can get out of it, with that partnership. And we want to then sort of, we're asking that, a big part of the goal be to come developing a mutual strategy and with collaboration between GE and ourselves around a multi-year sort of a, um, path forward. So we're looking beyond not just this year, but the next couple of years. And with that, have some milestones in place so that as we look two to three years down the road, we'll have a sense of, especially as we're talking about metrics, we're sort of hitting the milestones of what we said we would do. And in particular, the types of things that we're thinking that we could, um, actually would be good at the school to be engaged in these types of activities would be, as you see there, where it talks about, um, first from classroom interaction, you know, see there, where it talks about, um, first, with classroom interaction, you know, they're right across the street, logistically it's great, and so being able to have them come in, uh, share, um, career opportunities, technology, but just a sort of great opportunity there to, to leverage, uh, what they can bring in, um, uh, and then also from a, sort of a professional development standpoint with the, uh, with the faculty, and again, trying to impart some of the knowledge and things that they might bring that we typically might not be exposed to. Internships was actually one that I had asked a question, um, about, uh, at the last meeting, and as we talked, she responded with, as long as, um, students have to be at least eighteen, so as we talked about that and governance, we said, okay, um, we have in some cases juniors who might be eighteen, um, in other cases, this potentially could, might avail itself to our alumni. And ideally, it would, wouldn't it be wonderful if four or five years down the road after college, we actually had some former AMSA students who are now working for GE Healthcare, maybe came back at this program and this partnership was still in place, and they were part of, you know, part of the, uh, the partnership here? So, that was just sort of, you know, thinking down the road what the potential here is. Um, and then sort of moving down to B, um, which gets a little bit more into the metrics, how we measure this.
Get the community interaction?
Yes.
That we kind of added, just as there was some event that they could do.
I have a question by A, so I guess implement at least one of the other areas.
I don't think you meant other.
Do classroom interaction plus one more, or?
No, I think you just meant...
No, so, so what it was really referring to, if we said, sort of said, community interaction, this for December, and so we're looking, because they're right across the street, and we want to try to engage the group.
That's the relationship, right, the plan by December.
Right, right. But implement at least one of the other areas, we're referred to, in this case, either classroom interaction, professional development, um...
Maybe just implement one by December, right, show, show action.
Okay, all right, so other areas, and implementation of something, I mean, okay.
Yeah, and that, you know, because if it's multi-year, some of these others, you know, could be other years, it's not, it's not all these things in one year.
Right, so it's, let's say, low-hanging fruit, maybe professional development, they're right across the street, that might be something that between now and the end of May could be accomplished.
Or coming in speakers for a classroom, right? But that, this would be a longer term, right, relationship?
Mm-hmm, okay. And then, again, talking a little bit about metrics, how we measure it, so some of the things that we talked about, and the goal here was really to, so I was saying, um, looking for some tangible evidence of using what's been imparted from GE Healthcare, uh, for example, by the faculty, is that information being disseminated or being used, you know, whether it's teaching techniques, innovation, whatever it happens to be that they're bringing to the school, are we now using this so it doesn't just become a presentation and then it dies? So, um, as we said, identifying use and disseminating learning from content-based professionals.
Professional development from universities, so it doesn't sound like it's the, it's not, it's not a subset of the GE.
Yeah, no, it's...
Yeah, it's separate.
Yeah, it's separate.
So, what, what would that look like?
Well, I think, for example, I asked the principal and the department chairs a couple months ago to give their ideas about how they would see this kind of collaboration unfolding, and the most extensive things that are currently in place are through the science department. There have been a few things done with other departments, but, um, naturally, most of the companies in this area, they're in science and technology, but one, one thing that was suggested by departments such as the history or the English department would be to have , uh, renowned professors, of which there are quite a few in this area, come in and give a talk about the subject. So, for example, Gordon Wood is a professor emeritus at Brown, he's probably the premier American historian in the country, one of them, so he could come in and give a lecture to Anders Lewis's class on American colonial history, or, you know, Dan Brandeis, just down in Waltham, there's a, I don't know, David Hackett Fisher is another very, very, I mean, they're all over the place around here, but, you know, to have these people...
I think it's a great idea, but it doesn't sound like professional development to me.
Oh, well, it could be, sure, it could be for the faculty, or it could be for the students, or it could be, one of the things I've done in other schools is, well, actually, I had Gordon Wood come to a school about ten years ago, and in the morning, he talked with the students, and then in the afternoon, we had a PD day, and he talked with the faculty and had lunch with them, and they, they loved it, you know, he's...
So, how would you demonstrate identification, use, and dissemination? End of the year, we're gonna say, Dr. McCleary, prove that you did this.
Okay, uh, on December fifteenth, Gordon Wood from Brown, who came and talked about his book.
So, laughing aside, I'd actually like to hear that.
No, I'm not joking, I'm saying, that, that's what I would say.
Yep.
I, I would say, you know, on such and such a date, this professor came and discussed his new book or whatever, you know, talked about, uh, American colonial history.
Yep.
And the faculty took away, uh, an increased enthusiasm for teaching American colonial history and new insights into how to incorporate some of the professor's ideas into their lessons. And, you know, uh, as far as the students, I think the students can benefit by, uh, seeing a content area expert and somebody who's achieved a great deal of recognition in this area, talking about, you know, the specific things that they're learning and giving them, um, giving them insight into it.
And dissemination?
You mean to other schools?
I don't know, I read what's written here.
Yeah, I don't...
And then you're talking about students, and this doesn't appear to reference students, this appears to reference faculty.
Well, it says here, learning from content-based professional development opportunities for faculty and staff, so I, I just suggested that in some cases, you can have, kill two birds with one stone and have the person talk to the students as well.
I'm sure you can, I'm just trying to understand how to kill the first bird.
Well...
May I ask a question, this complex? Let's take a, a scenario, one that currently does exist at AMSA. So, we have teachers, um, who have gone to universities to work with faculty at major universities in the Boston area, to build curriculum for certain courses at AMSA. There's definitely a faculty/university interaction. It has led to the construction of courses which exist here currently now, which have worked with in collaboration with professors at, say, Boston University.
Yep.
Now, this is not when the professor comes to the school and has a nice afternoon inspirational chat, with this genuine learning, genuine development of the teacher with that faculty member, to make a permanent addition to AMSA, which is strong concrete in our curriculum. And this is something that we currently have, and certainly would be wonderful to expand it on. Is this an example of what you have in mind, Dr. McCleary?
I guess it, it really depends on how the logistics would work out. I know that, um, I just talked with a, the other day with a history teacher who spent about five weeks in the summer with a scholar of, um, American history down in Atlanta with a bunch of other teachers, so that would be an example of a collaboration with a university professor where you would come back and bring that into your course, which he's been doing. I could foresee that thing.
I, I think when we talked about in governance, what we thought disseminate meant is this example, this teacher goes and does this, they should come back and give a presentation to their department.
Well, that, that's exactly what I suggested she do, so she's gonna talk with Dr. Lewis, the department chair, and set up a presentation for one of the upcoming professional developments.
I guess, what, dissemination is a little confusing, because it has a different meaning for us in the chart.
Well, it can mean, I mean, it can mean disseminating our best practices to other schools, which we do every year. We have a standing invitation that we read, uh, submit every year to all the local schools, it's called the Educator Exchange, and where we, uh, have lunch for them, they come over, they spend the day here, they meet with their department chairs, they view our classes, they talk with our faculty, and they learn about things, so that's one sense we disseminate, but that's really us going out to others and showing them. I think this is more, this is more bringing people in to help us.
I think it's helpful not to use the same word to mean different things.
Your problem, we should change the word.
Especially dissemination.
No, exactly, it's, there's a connotation associated with that word.
I guess, and I think, and the ideas are great, and I'm just not, not just trying to difficult, uh, but...
No, but you have a subject for a different word, because now that you know what we intended...
Say something as simple as sheer, sheer learning.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
From, from my point of view, uh, as a school director, I'm, I'm really interested in bringing content, academic content area experts to the school, to not only inspire the faculty, but then give them a chance to, uh, have conversation, but to possibly lead to other collaborations down, you know, if you're dealing with somebody who's a retired, for example, Gordon Wood, I keep coming back, he's retired, so, you know, if he would want to provide some kind of ongoing, uh, you know, meeting or whatever, you know, with teachers from here who have an interest in becoming better history teachers, that's a possibility too, you know?
The last one there, C, um, one of the things that we spent some time talking about was, as, as it says here, engagement with corporations in university, so from a corporation standpoint, we have a lot of, uh, parents who work for a number of corporations right in our own business, and, um, the thought here was that, again, this is, trying to make this tangible, would be sort of an outreach to our existing AMSA community of parents, for their knowledge and expertise in sharing of possible collaborative opportunities within their own jurisdictions, their own corporations, that we might be able to take advantage of.
Poor too.
Poor, the poor parents. Yeah, that's true too, yep, yep.
So, what, what would that look like, uh, to, to, to go along Chris's, uh, Chris's point at the end of the year, would we see, would we see a plan, would we see a, uh, you know, a, some sort of vehicle for, uh, this kind of engagement, uh, either a solicitation of engagement or meetings, or what would this look like?
So, just one thought for me, based on the earlier discussion we had around, um, parent coffees, I could see this maybe being a potential topic area, or if there was a specific area that, um, we wanted to have engagement, to basically do an outreach to parents in one of the coffees, or have a coffee where maybe it's wide open and people actually share a little bit about maybe their corporations, or if they know that their corporations have a desire, just like GE did, to work with some local schools, especially STEM schools. So, I think it would really be sort of, um, Dr. McCleary, how you would, or the ED, how they would sort of design it, but what we're saying here is some demonstration of outreach to parents.
Yeah, we have Mike from Communications, because...
And maybe then, we have channels now, so we have a...
That's actually where I was going with this, but I'd like to see the website, you know, you know, outreach and so forth. I know one of the things that has been talked about is, there are a lot of companies around here who surplus equipment that is newer than equipment that we're using in our classrooms, and they're, you know, they're throwing it away, giving it away, uh, and, you know, getting rid of it, and so, you know, engaging in, with organizations to let them know what our equipment needs are and how they might fulfill those. Internships beyond just GE Healthcare Life Sciences, you know, if there are opportunities out there. In other words, I'd like to, when you say demonstrate engagement of parents and staff, uh, you know, I'd like to see sort of what would that tangibly look like? Would that be, you know, that engagement, that outreach, so...
And I think, once you get a couple of parents engaged, they'll start to demonstrate what that actually looks like, whether it's, you know, coming in to do some sort of presentation, or is it bringing people back to one of the area corporations to get them involved in what, in what those companies are doing, so that they can start to learn more about that.
Yes, no, I hear you, so, to your point, maybe Ken's, maybe something like, if we were to add in here, you know, to identify corporate collabora, uh, collaboration opportunities along with a tangible output, something that says, you know, here's what we can put our arms around, that we can actually look at, whether it's a timetable or something that gets set up. So, we add that in with tangible output, something like that.
Yeah, I thought, I thought that was already covered by demonstration and engagement, because that implies that you're gonna show in some way how you have accomplished this. So, for example, if I were to say, well, in the past year, there was a parent from a certain corporation, we established a contact with them, they arranged for the school to receive a certain amount of equipment or a grant from their corporation to purchase equipment, I mean, something like that, so, you know, just today, a parent got in touch with the vice principal, works for a corporation, and said, uh, that she has some availability of potential money to purchase equipment for science or fund certain things, and Mike's gonna, you know, follow up with her and, um, see what, see what we can work out, so...
So, this says demonstration of engagement of parents and staff to identify opportunities, it doesn't say anything about the products, right? And I'm not sure these do, I mean, I think...
It was more intended to be a shift, right, a mindset shift to say, let's reach out.
Yeah, so it's about reaching out to parents, and I think, you know, we don't have to, I think I would, I would trust Dr. McCleary, if he feels okay doing this, he's gonna come back to us in August or whenever and say, and here's how I did it, and...
That's the way I understood it.
Yeah, so my, my, my question about the wording was not so much to disagree with the wording, but to, more to understand it, so, not to suggest this is where Dr. McCleary was going with this, but you say demonstration of engagement with parents, and so, I, I met with three parents, uh, and staff on this, is different from, you know, I worked with the communications director to establish an ongoing engagement vehicle where we would do outreach and so forth, and so I was looking for sort of an understanding of what the scale is, and, and I think the discussions provided that.
Okay, 'cause I think the tail end of the sentence there around identify corporate collaboration opportunities, so as these opportunities get identified, I think the natural progression says, okay, what are we doing with those opportunities? So, it starts with, let's identify them, and naturally, it evolves into which ones are we gonna take advantage of?
Yeah, I think the secret, the secret ingredient here is the engagement, more, given our recent history.
Yes.
More than the product, and it's kind of like, even if none of them works out...
Yeah, the fact that it's...
If Dr. McCleary can demonstrate that I did engage, and I think Ken brings up an interesting point, like, you're gonna engage a little or you're gonna engage a lot?
Well, I was thinking more ongoing, that this is not an effort where, where an effort, so, so there's a difference between individual engagement where the time you put in into engaging that in each of several ways takes a lot of upfront effort, as opposed to establishing a broader, uh, engagement effort that, that would include, uh, using our website and other vehicles to try to, uh, try to capitalize and scale that, I guess, so...
So, I think it would be a big win if just we had Dr. McCleary and the parents agreeing that the parents had in fact been engaged, 'cause there's been, you know, he says they have, they say they, or some of them say they haven't, so I think just the, the fact of engagement, these steps were taken, that's probably good enough.
Yeah, I agree, but I do think the big win is what comes out of that engagement. I mean, to me, the engagement is the first step, but what comes out of that, and if we believe we have a richness and a diversity of people with different roles and responsibilities within AMSA and the corporate community, I think we've got a lot of potential that we could tap into.
Yeah, I, I want to mention that the collaboration sheet that I provided to Pauline already lists ten different entities that we're collaborating with, so there is a lot of this going on, and when I met with the department chair, the science department chair earlier today to talk more about this, uh, it became clear to me that there's a bit of a, a balance to be struck, because on the one hand, we have a very intensive science and math and humanities curriculum, and we have a certain number of hours in the day, and we have a certain focus to that curriculum, and we have people taking multiple advanced placement courses and so forth, so we already have ten engagement areas here, and I'm not saying we couldn't add more, but we have to be judicious about how we do it, and one thing the department, science department chair expressed to me was, uh, that in some cases, the real challenge is coming to a kind of a meeting of the minds between the corporate entity and the, say, the science department. For example, he's had conversations with GE in the past, and he said, well, these are the areas we'd like to focus on, and they have come back and said, well, these are the areas that we can focus on now. In the past, that was because they had a certain amount of their personnel in a different area of the country, they're here now, so there might be an opportunity for new things. But he's also conscious of safeguarding the, the time and the effort of the students, which is finite, and making sure that that, so it's, you know, there's a multiplicity of things you could potentially do. and making sure that that, so it's, you know, there's a multiplicity of things you could potentially do, but then you come down to, and I'm, I'm mindful of respecting that, you know, the faculties need to pursue with a certain amount of consistency what it is their primary, you know, subject is and how they get it done, and what, at the same time, doing this kind of thing.
I think we also want it to be broader than just classroom interaction, though. Classroom interaction is one piece, and there are other interactions that we want to encourage, I guess.
Yeah, I think this sounds right, I think the idea of ten that I haven't seen, but I, I get you.
Yeah.
And then, doing this one at a...
The GE.
That sounds like plenty.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
It's a lot, so...
And then, maybe the answer, after you've had this experience, that's great, now when you do less, is one possible outcome, I guess.
But, you know, I think there are multiple, I'm thinking of it, there's multiple ways to use this, um, just developing, even if, um, you know, there are multiple conversations with, with corporations around, even if nothing comes of it.
Yep.
We have generated positive PR. They are aware, I mean, awareness is number one, hopefully, there's positive PR, right? That has positive interaction. And, um, you know, this is all the long-term stuff that you've talked about to us for three years that you have to start, right, in order to get to your long-term development goals as well. You know, there's just sort of seeds of that along the way.
Okay, so we voted on this last month, do we need to do anything?
We need to vote on the metric.
We need to, okay. So, we need a motion to, uh...
I don't know, I'm, will we accept this as...
I'll second it.
Okay. We need to do this as a roll call, uh, Ken?
Hi.
Liz?
Hi.
Okay. Um, Rick? Still... Mute? Rick, are you on mute?
You might.
Hi.
Hi.
And you can't vote yet, so... We'll make, Michael will vote when he comes back.
I, I'm sorry, I was...
Yep, all right, great, okay, so that passes, so we're final.
Ask Rick if he hears what he said "I" about.
Were we on mute? Yes, Thomas did.
I'm not, no.
Okay, great, are there, um, other governance updates that you want to give?
No, that was the, uh, primary essence of our meeting.
Okay, and...
Thank you. Teamwork.
Um, fundraising, we're skipping education committee.
So, uh, all, the only update I have is that we're meeting on December eighth and January twelfth.
Okay, great. Does anyone have any other topics that they would like to bring up? Okay, your time's up, we are done.
You have to take a vote.
I was trying to get this done really quick, Rick, eight, ten, look at that.
Were you entertaining a motion to adjourn?
I was, I was entertaining a motion to adjourn. I was, I was a little overexcited about that, I guess it's just plus the two hours. Yes.
Well, I was...
Chris, okay. Chris makes the motion to adjourn?
Hi.
Okay, wait, nobody seconded?
Oh, Ken did.
Oh, Ken seconded, well, he didn't, he was voting. He's wrapping it all into one.
Voting irregular.
Rick?
Hi.
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 Great, we are adjourned, okay, eight, eleven.
That might be a record, huh?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, we did that, it's one seven-minute meeting, we... Five-minute meeting, we got the vote, vote, yeah.